So, good evening ladies and gents. I need to remind you everyone this meeting is being recorded by, in a private capacity, by councillor Wilson. It's not an official record of this council meeting. Before the meeting starts, I'm asking that you consider stopping recording these meetings, Kevin. I say that because whilst these meetings are open to the public, I'm convinced that recording of the meetings is impinging on the ability of the councillors to speak frankly and openly. In that way, it's restricting the workings of this council and having an impact on professional work which we all seek to do as councillors. So, come to the agenda for this for absence, Cal.
Sue Johnson and Richard Dodg.
Any declarations of interest?
Well, I have to declare for the no one.
I think possibly you would.
Just a copy itself, probably.
Yeah, I was going to say, I've just suddenly thought about that. I'll write it out.
Okay, we come to minutes of the council meeting held on 10th of September. You can copy of the draft minutes here in front of you. Let me just go through them page by page and see if you're okay with those minutes. And everyone okay with page one? With page two? With page three? With page four? And with page five? Everyone's alright with those on the outside, those are the record of the meeting of 10th of September. Are there any matters arising? No? Okay. Next thing we have is planning. I'm seeming to rush with this, it's because of the fact that I'm mindful of these roadworks starting at eight. I think we should be okay time-wise, but beyond this main meeting, we've got other schedules we need to have, so let's try and see what we can get through. There are notes of the minutes of the planning of the committee meetings held on 2nd of September and 16th of September. I think Will as deputy chair on the planning, I'm sure he can handle any matters that might arise. But you wanted to highlight anything from your point of view? Anything people want to ask Will about those planning notes? No? Okay, thanks. Okay, Pontillan Rep Society are back with a request for the money that we talked about at the last meeting. If you've read the papers, you'll see that they're again requesting this money. An idea that occurred to me, and I'm open for discussion about this, but an idea that occurred to me was to consider the grant or what figure we're willing to forward on this if we are wanting to do it, but to ask that it's not spent on rental. It just seems to be a strange thing to do with a grant set of funds. I'm not entirely suggesting that they will only spend it on something that we might specify. I just think it might be a way around the concern we've got about them asking for money for rental.
Yeah, but the equipment would cost them too much to buy, Alan. They've only asked them for this equipment for 10 days.
Yes, but they spend money on clothes and on makeup and all sorts of other things, and they could use that money that we're giving them as a grant for that money and then use the money not for... It's as if we're concerned as a council about it being for rental, and I'm just trying to suggest a workaround to that.
Well, my personal opinion now I've started speaking is, I'm all in agreement to give them it. They bring an awful lot of pleasure to a lot of people who, for various reasons, don't go into Newcastle and places like that, and it's something that they're experimenting with this year for the first time. And I don't think £500 would... Would don't get asked for a lot of money from the rep for the number of years they've been running, in my opinion. They don't ask very often, so I'm more in favour of giving them the £500.
Wilson.
So, unfortunately, I do disagree with that. I think £500, while it's not a huge amount of money, it is still a big chunk of the actual grant budget that we have. And I was one of those who asked for, you know, the higher agreement, and actually it is only for four shows. And it just does seem like a lot of money if we're all looking at budgets and, you know, what we kind of can't spend. I just, I don't personally think that that is a good use of...
I know they say it's for four shows, but they also say it will be there for 10 days. So that, if you have something new, in my opinion, you have to practise with it because it makes perfection. Sorry.
Yeah, they've said that, clearly.
And, sorry, just read in the last two paragraphs. And I just, I'm only assuming this is for shows during special education meets. Is that why they can't go into Newcastle and watch the pan job?
No, no, it's...
Whereas you're saying here, otherwise you'd not be able to follow the plot to make sure they understand what's happening. I think it's just more because the show that we're doing, they need to be reduced aside, they need some level of special effects. Right, okay.
They need to all look like fairies, and the building needs to look big so that the children can understand it more. That's what it's for, some sort of special effects.
Kevin, what's on your mind?
Yeah, I think I'm also quite sceptical of this now, and I was last week. So, a comment I'll make specifically on this, which is that I don't like the rental. I actually, having thought about it a little bit, Alan, I'm not sure I like the idea of giving them £500, but nominally saying to them, spend it on the props and other stuff, because in effect, that's still us giving them £500 for this, and I don't think it's a wise use of quite limited money. I think as well, the goal that it's, the idea that it's going to encourage people to shop locally, I don't think is... I can't imagine that many people go to the Pontillan and Rep Society performances aren't aware of the great local tradespeople that we have at Mootway. I think more broadly, I think that it's obviously very hard to say no to giving money to worthy local causes. And again, repeat my longstanding view that examining things in isolation like this rather than set funding windows throughout the year, it does make us a little bit more... Does make us spend a little bit more than we necessarily would if we could actually view things in the context of all the other amount of money that we're spending.
Okay, Alan.
By your way to that question, Alan, it's just about usage and how many members of the community would benefit from this. I think we talked a wee bit about schools and younger children being able to go to this. And I feel a lot happier for £500 or even more if we knew throughout that seven or 10 day period, each of the schools was going to visit during the day. It almost had a bit of a three show, or at least use the wall for some reason as well. And that way, what we could say is, we're renting it out, but actually 500 people will go through the doors next week, which could help. We don't, I know it's harder to guess how many people will go to this pan event because that maybe stops someone taking it. The other statistic which I saw on terms of usage was just the membership, which has 20 seniors and five juniors, which is a very low member base, I have to say the thing. So, it would just be trying to eke out if us as a community, if we're going to pay for the community rental, could we really, not just double down, but triple down on the usage.
Well, we need to decide what we're going to do with this.
It's always packed, you know.
Right.
It's always... Have you ever been to one of them?
I haven't, no.
Well, if you go, the seats are not very comfortable. But, I have got better because I gave them all my old ones, but it's always packed, and they do try to make money when you're there, you know, they've got the sweet thing, they've got the ice creams, they do try and make money when it's on, but whenever I've been, it's been staff and room only if you go late. So, it is very well received, particularly by a lot of, you might find a lot of grandmothers and granddads with grandchildren and that kind of thing.
They don't want to take the kids in the town for the pan, that's the tip.
Yeah.
Completely, you get all of that, yeah. Just trying to think when it's idle during the day, the machine, we've got the schools and things, can we...
So, we can't think of what, I'm waiting for the miner to come back in. I expect she's popped out for a moment, but we need, if we're going to do anything with this, we need a proposal and a second on this if we are minded to do something, or we need a proposal to say not to do something.
Well, I would propose not giving them the money, if anyone would say that.
And I would propose we do give them the money.
Okay, and how would you be proposing, Christine?
I would propose to make £500 for them to put three shows on when they're very, very rarely asked for one.
All right, that's how much? That's fine.
They're not the people who come every year banging on your door saying, "Come on, I'll have money for this." They actually, they actually manage that rep extremely well, so I would propose to get the £500.
So, you need a second for each of your proposals.
Unless it's a home board, can you not? Actually, if the...
Well, we need to wait, they don't buy anyway.
I'm waiting for miner to, I'm no mal to come back in, so I didn't realise no one was out as well. Once they rejoin, we still need a second, you've got a proposal not to do something and a proposal to do something, you need someone to second the whole proposal before we can vote on it.
A second proposal, based on the information we've got, because I think I made a really good point about other use, you know, if it was going to benefit other people as well, then I might reconsider it, but I think based on this, I would second your...
Could be caveat of yes, by asking that rep to write it to all the schools and say, "Would you like to use it during the day?"
My only concern is that they talk about using it for rehearsals, so I wonder if they're going to use it for rehearsals during the day and then it'll leave.
I think they do have a, they do mention it there, they do have a pre-show thing, and I'm not sure if that's all the schools, but I think that's a pre-beat. It's like a dress rehearsal before you do the main show.
Are you saying you're seconding Christine's proposal?
I'm thinking about it.
You're thinking about it? Right, well, you've got until the miner gets back then to speak about this.
Can we propose not to come back to it?
I think we should. So, this dashboard should be reasonably straightforward, it's included with the annual orders, the covering note from Cath explains where we are, the paper supports what she's saying in her brief report is there as part of the papers. What we're being asked is to look at the recommendation, which is a recommendation to approve and accept the external orders, reports and certificates for 24, 25, and sections one and two of the AIGAR.
Yeah.
You okay with that?
I'll be difficult, thanks.
Yes, agreed with? Fine. We're then on to the corporate governance review, and again, very full summary of the situation by Cath to explain exactly where we are. I think it's interesting to mention in the context of all of this that Cramlington Town Council, for those that weren't there, serving a 35,000 population with 14 town councillors, as against our 12,000 population and 12 councillors. I'm just doing no more than repeating the facts on this, but we need to decide in the context of this item, what we want to do or not do in terms of corporate governance review.
So, I think if I may, I thought it was worth us just discussing the number of councillors. I don't have a problem with Pontillan being boarded, I think that works quite well, and indeed each ward has got quite different characteristics, that's important. I think that keeping the names obviously makes sense, and keeping the parish boundaries where they are makes sense as well. I think though, the fact that, and I take your point about Cramlington, which is additional context, I do think it would be worth just having a discussion, would a couple of extra councillors or a couple fewer councillors do anything to improve or hinder the workings of Pontillan Town Council? I mean, I think the fact that we've been at 12 since, what was it, like the 1980s that he said?
It could have been longer.
Yeah, and from what we have gained, the population of Pontillan will massively increase, no doubt. I'm wary as well of the fact that this is the first time the NCC has ever done one, or at least since NCC was formed as a unitary, and there's quite substantial likelihood that Pontillan's population will grow. If we are sort of minded to become a more strategic town council, if we are minded to be thinking about ways in which we can work better and provide more services perhaps, then would the addition of a couple of extra councils be helpful or not? I just thought it was worth gauging everyone's opinions on it. I'm slightly agnostic on it myself, so I wanted to give a thought to that.
Let's hear some other views, any views, other views, but some of what Kevin's saying.
I don't know how I feel, because I feel that when they split it this year, for the first year, we've never had four councillors in the north before until this year, but due to the sizes of the population, the powers that be, whoever they were, decided would have four in the north, and I think it's too... And they cut the numbers down, but it's still remained as 12. I just think the 12 works fine. Does anybody really think we need...
I don't need any more.
Any more? I don't think so.
Any fewer, shall we be radical, any fewer councillors?
Oh, no, one fewer.
One of the issues for me is the case load that we all have as individual councillors, and I have to say that I just don't have a problem, I've done it for eight years now, as you're all aware. If I was being swamped with the number of things that were being asked of me, that would reflect something of a concern to increase the number, but I don't have that situation. I think a lot of inquiries go to the office, which then sometimes get reflected out to us or passed on to NCC. But, come on, Alan, come on.
This is like nothing against anyone here, I imagine we didn't know anyone. I actually think we could do with less.
I don't think we have too many. Yeah, I mean, it's incredible when you have...
But then you say, if you have less...
I don't want to see anyone go, but like, I do feel like, I don't know why we've got 12.
But sometimes now, well, you've got 12 because you've got so many subgroups. And if you go to less than 12 councillors, I mean, last year for instance, before the new people came on board, we used to suffer, well, you used to suffer planning, and I only ever attended planning when they couldn't make a quorum, and that was quite regularly. When the quorum made a quorum, Bev would ring me up and say, "Can you come up, Christine?" If you have less than 12 councillors, you're then going to have to have more councillors on subgroups, and I personally don't think it would work with less.
But you would reflect the subgroups.
You can, I'm coming now.
I'd like to go through a full year versus a council after before I could confidently say it's too many or too less, Alan, but I think where I'd be really keen to get feedback would be from Cath, from Ian and from Bev as well, in terms of, are they getting too much noise from the 12 of us, or too little noise at times? Are we actually eating and betting the running of the office, or are we...
Do you mean what you want?
No, but it's important, Cath, because you need, because that might actually answer is 12 too many, or too little, or what?
Not for me to say, but we haven't got the luxury of waiting a year, we've got to get back to them by the 13th of November, so I don't know whether this is what people actually believe, but I think with the way that councillors' details are published now, it's, sometimes harder to get directly in touch with them, so I think a lot of this stuff does come through us. I don't think that's unmanageable, but, you know, it happens. I've only ever known 12 councillors, and it's just what I'm used to, I can't imagine it being any less, but I think it works okay from our point of view. I don't know whether either of you have got anything to add to that.
I think it works well, certainly in the short time that, after the job, you know, and in meetings, it's a, you get a good number of councillors attending meetings, so you can have a good discussion, you know.
Yeah, I think the very, the very long time I've done it, it has always been 12. And I know the population has changed an awful lot and all the rest of it, but I don't know how that's impacted on councillors individually at the moment, but I do think it is slightly harder to get in touch with councillors' directors, I said. So, the tendency is to come to the office and get us to either get in touch with councillors or deal with it ourselves.
Bev, any difference of good to bad?
Well, just the committees that I'm involved with, I could do with more people involved with them, because we do still have that problem, Christine, but it is a struggle to make the numbers up for planning. So, if you reduce it, it would put a lot more pressure on the ones that were left to fill those gaps.
I had a phone call with miner, I think a few ago, and she was mentioning Sue and how Sue couldn't go to the planning, and I was looking for someone else to go to the planning. And I okayed, but you seemed to think that you had to have experience on the planning, because I was sending a message for her, and then I thought, well, I don't know.
I thought you were on the planning committee in County.
Yeah.
I think this...
It's a conflict of interest.
It's a conflict, because you can't, Richard, if he knows, he always declares an interest and says he's not saying anything about planning. I think you would compromise yourselves, okay?
We need to move on, and what I'm proposing to this meeting...
I think there's no one to speak out when I'm at the stage.
Just my second term in council, I'm quite happy with 12, and I can see it's needed that number to fill in for the subcommittees, so that we have enough, because sometimes you can't make it with a good other commitment.
So, I'm trying to close the item down, because we do need to move on, we're getting around to time. And I'm proposing that we leave things as they are, and we might have to put the reply in to say the wards and the number of councillors and so on are okay as is.
Yeah.
Yes? Okay.
If you want to check that out, you can, you know, it's not, I'm not saying it's possible for me, but I'm just thinking...
Well, I just thought if I could be on the committee, I'd have a second, especially Sue's on here.
Well, the thing is, if Richard was to pass comment on any of the plan applications here, according to him, and this is the rule of Richard, he can't then go to the council and say anything if he's already said it in here, it's a conflict of interest, he always says...
It's, well, it is, it's not just Richard, everybody that's on the planning committee, you're...
But Richard's the only one of them, I had a plan before.
If they get involved in no problems, they can't get involved in...
So, okay, with that, that's item, I'll go back to the Pontillan for grant application, and we're waiting for you and the miner to return so we can take a partisan vote on this. What we've got is a quote from Christine that I think the seconding was to say that we should give the rep the £500, and we have a photo from Kevin, seconded by Rosie, to say we should not give a grant. If we can vote on the not giving a grant first of all. And on the second proposal about giving them a £500 grant, I think that's carried. Okay, the Castle International Airport, Cath's prepared this summary of the situation with the master plan. If you want some nice daytime reading, I've got a copy of the master plan here, which I think I've read cover to cover.
It was a never like.
A lot of time to this, I'm telling you, in the recent few weeks, but never mind, here we are, the airport has this master plan, which essentially is saying they think they're going to go to 9 million passengers by 2040. I suspect they won't get as far as that, but I think it would be perfectly realistic to say they go from the 5.2 million currently to perhaps 7. And this summary that we have in print of us is welcoming the master plan, you can see, welcoming the economic contribution and so on, rightly reflects the concerns that we do have, that you were talking about with Joe Morris, Rosie, about the impact upon Pontillan that we're living with day to day, week to week. I'm throwing you over to the meeting, because we need to consider where we are, yes, Kevin?
I was going to say, I think the bullet points that you've listed on the support are a fair and accurate representation of certainly my views. I was going to possibly suggest that you might want to change in the 1, 2, 3, 4, fifth bullet point down, about noise and pollution levels are appreciated and need to go further, just changing, and to box, if you were going to submit those points, verbatim. And I wonder as well, that would be worth just including something that just said that we hope the airport would acknowledge that it is owned by local people, by the councils, because I think that that is something that we should be stressing as well, that they operate, that they run it as a community service for us and deliver profits for us, and therefore should be mindful of our concerns.
I didn't catch what you said in the fifth bullet point.
The fifth bullet point down, it says the efforts are made, the efforts, which I mean by, because it's more say doors, because we should...
Oh, it's...
Appreciated, but it needs to go further.
And then with the proposition of the back of ownership. Okay, any other views, because there's a summary there.
No, I think we've covered the parking, haven't we? The parking to me is the most important thing that goes on for the residents. That's the most important thing, in my opinion.
Yeah, I'd almost say it, I'm a, that's number one bullet point.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Making number one rather than further down.
I think that impacts us a little most, isn't it?
Okay. Any other views on it, because we'll just go ahead and reply along those lines then?
Yeah.
All right. We still have a meeting of the events working party, there's minutes that Cath produced to summarise those discussions. There is a recommendation within them, which is the council would consider approval...
Don't have that down, Rosie.
Down to the chair.
Oh, sorry.
You've forgotten your own chair, have you, Alan?
No, I think Alan's correct, I think we've got the minutes there, quick summary, I think the dog event was reasonably well-attended, we thought it was, it's a year two, we thought there's more mileage to go, but we maybe wanted to tweak the date a wee bit, so it wasn't as close to the Kirkie event, and hopefully it'd be better supported next year as well as a new community side of things. The big event coming up on the horizon, everybody, is on the 9th of November, the Remembrance Sunday, and we've got some good notes circulating, probably in terms of prep for that. What I just asked the councillors today is, can we work with Cath on that, and Cath and the team ask for help, and ask for people that shall help, and be on different posts, can we please help her with that, because it would make a really important day going very smoothly for us. And I think Richard Dodd and Lyle Darwin were going to help senior at the leisure centre, because Richard's got a low voice in particular. And then, Alan, as you rightly mentioned, Christine came up with a good new idea for the elf trail at Christmas, and we wanted to, you know, vote on that today and say, is it a good idea and are we able to put £300 towards purchasing some elves to pop in local shop windows? I don't know, Christine, if you want to summarize that very quickly.
Cath's done a letter, she's got the file. I'm going to knock on every shop in the precinct, I'm going to call in, see who is willing to put an elf in the window, to see how many of them want to. I'm going to try and get two of the shops that I know quite well, if they'll put, if they'll be willing to hand out a form, and also have a little box decorated in Christmas paper with a hole across the top, where once the children have finished and they've come up with the answer, they then pop it into there, and we will have prizes for the two age groups. I don't think we decided on what the prize would be, which we might need to do before, because probably it'll go on Pont News and Views, won't it, in the November edition? So, we didn't come up with any prizes, I think I suggested chocolate, and a few, a few people thought chocolates weren't appropriate, because some parents don't like them, but we gave Easter eggs for the Easter egg train, and I had about 300 applications came back, was it about 300? I had an awful lot, anyway, and all I did was fold them all up and put their names in two different bags with their names, their ages in each bag, and then you have to contact them, so I think we could maybe have three prizes in each age group, and that obviously, whatever would decide, it would come out the £300 we're asking. Whereas, whereas assuming it'll be no more than £300, it depends how many shops want elves, because up here, you could get it to spell a Merry Christmas, and up at Darras Hall, where you've got less shops, it could just spell holidays or Santa Claus or...
Well, don't give the answers out.
No, no, all they do is they go around all the different shops.
We need to move on, Christine.
It's the kids' end now.
Just before we come to those not have a proposal, I just wanted to ask a question on the Remembrance Sunday thing. I sent an email around, Richard Dodd had kindly offered to try and source us a pipa to lead the parade. He replied to me, but I noticed it was just to me saying that he'd got one sorted. Has he been in touch with you about that, Cath?
Well, yes, I had to confirm it with the pipa, so...
Oh, right.
I mean, I had been in touch with him about the lead, and he couldn't do it, so, yeah, he's just leading the parade though, that's all.
No, that's nice.
That's nice, then. And I'll give some win to you then, rather than...
No, I'm not after a win at all, I just, he just asked me to seal the deal, I think, for one reason. So, yes, he's leading the parade, I didn't want him to kind of interfere with the bug last of the situation. And I've told the commanding officer who's leading the parade, and they're very happy, but also like a drum, so, you know, I've asked him if he's got a drum, I thought, I'm not hopeful, but yes, it's booked, so he's coming.
Okay, we're back with Dan's recommendation about the £300 for the elves, we need to decide if we're supporting that or not.
Yeah, I think it's a lovely idea.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
£100, yeah?
Thank you very much.
Christine, I've got your letters, yeah?
And Hassan got a copy of this.
Yeah, I don't know how I was enough for that.
I've got the Broadway ones as well.
Yeah, Hassan's knocking on Broadway doors. He gets, he gets a...
Okay, we're now to the environment meeting with the minutes that are in the papers for tonight, and I think I'll have to go to you, Christine, trying to, anything you need to highlight within this report.
Okay, does anybody want to bring anything up before I go into the recommendation? There are a good set of minutes, Cath always manages to make a good set of minutes out of my meetings, I don't know how, because I'm a bit like a butler at the time, I do flick... I do flip from one thing to the other, now until I'm very exercise, but I'm fine, that is a big mo. So, I'll go into the recommendation. The recommendation is, the first one is for the ashtrays in the park. It's to complete the work. As CAF says, the money will be taken out of reserves. The trees have to come down because they're diseased. So, my recommendation is that you agree to pay £4,260 to complete the works in the park.
Right, shall we do a vote on that one? Because you've given them a lot of thinking about that. Have people supported the £4,260 that Sir Christine's been seeking?
Thank you very much, and of course, Hassan. And then the second one is an interesting one. And I think it's a really good one, Ian came up with this. And it's for, oh, I, I need to be Ian and CAF working together, I don't know. But it's for branded clothing for the contracts and projects officer and contractors. Now, I personally think it's a great idea, because you can be going through the park and you don't know who these people are, if they're gonna approach you about Kevin, what you do with your dog, or, or whatever, whatever they might want to say to you. You might feel a little bit vulnerable. Whereas if they've got a high vis jacket on, saying they're Ponte and Town Council, and I think the word Kevin liked.
Town, town rangers.
Town rangers. Just printed on the back, and that's £730, and that's what we're asking. And I'll take any questions on it, if you have any, yes.
£730 for three high vis dogs?
No, no.
It's jackets.
No, it's jackets and promos and, and jumper, sweatshirts, sort of jumper things.
And they'll all be branded for Ponte and Town Council.
They need to have them so they can, you know, don't have to wash them every day. So, there's multiple ones, not the multiple jackets.
Yeah, and unfortunately, a lot of the work they do is in really bad weather. And you do really, and, and I just think it's nice, if people, if the general public, other people at Ponte and say, it's a PTC contractor. It means.
It gives them some profile, doesn't it?
It's given them some accreditation, and it also lets the general public know that, yeah, we do look after the park, we do look after the gardens, and these are the people who do it.
Okay, Christine, so it's a request of the £730 for the clothing that Christine's wanting to try and secure the purchase of. So, can you have a vote?
Thank you, that's major.
And the other on the environment report?
Not unless anybody's got any questions on any, anything in there. It's all, it's all pretty straightforward, it's, all I would say to you is, it's, it's, it's a really good, I think it's a really good committee, because we've achieved an awful lot in the last 18 months. And the plans for the future are even bigger than that.
Okay, thanks a lot, Christine, we're now onto the highways report, I've got a copy of the highways report.
Yeah. The what on the back of the Joe Morris agenda?
Yeah.
Okay, the man that Christine was saying, I'm happy to take any questions that people have on the highways report, but I've got a bit of commentary from me, just to try and give a bit more full account of what happened at the highways meeting. You'll be aware that I saw a meeting with Glenn Sampson at his offices in Morpeth earlier last month. And leading from that, Glenn arranged to come to this highways meeting. One of the major things I was asking for, in line with what we were talking about with Joe Morris earlier, was about the conditions of roads and highways within, within Ponte and. So Glenn Sampson attended, as you'll see from the minutes, along with Paul Jones, who is head of local services, and Stuart Norton, who was in charge of strategic roads within, within the county. And in line with our stance that we are taking more and more as a council, my remarks to Glenn at the outset, apart from welcoming them, was to say we want to work in partnership with them, we feel as though we're not getting as much as we should as a town council in the relationship with NCC. And this was a clear example of trying to, because we've worked with them on, on highways matters. We went through what was a very interesting discussion about the bypass, and I touched on it earlier with Joe Morris, if you picked up. It was actually Richard Dodd said, if it's going to be 60 or 70 million for a bypass, and you're saying absolutely no, why couldn't we look at the possibility, with all its merits and demerits, of an A696 link through to the Blackden Road, for example? More easily digestible than asking for the full, the full bypass. And all I would say is, now with, when I was discussing with Joe, nothing was promised, but there was a very constructive dialogue. One of the things I found very hard about it was that Stuart Norton was going back to 2015 and talking about some very detailed survey work that was done then, including cameras and recording number plates and so on. And his argument in that meeting, that this is going back to on the 2nd of October, is that traffic volumes are going down, not up. And I tried to reflect my perceived experience in regular use of the roads around Ponte and also use arguments like the increase in tourism to Northumberland, and the fact that because people don't know that the A1 isn't being upgraded, are they using now the 696 instead of the A1? So there were a lot of healthy and constructive discussions about what we can or can't do. But more significantly, and this is now coming back to projects where, where we are, I won't develop it further, but just to make mention of Westwick Road End, that you were touching on earlier, Rosie. There's more to happen there, which I can add to if you wish me to. The WLO lines on the Daris Hall estate that we've been after for the last couple of years are about to happen, I can't give you a date, but they're about to happen. And I think within this next two to three weeks, there is a major resurfacing programme at the Broadway shops, at the front of the Broadway shops and on the area behind the shops. There is, within what we're going to come to, within the highways agenda, consideration of the Jameson Fields programme within LTP, and I'll come back to that in, in a moment. We also said we'd look at the Blackbird Junction, the problems about the tight, tightness at the bottom of Thornhill Road and that, that junction. And we're getting, talking LTP, which is talking about the work, some of which is starting last night and again tonight, about resurfacing on Main Street and on, on West Road. So I'm trying to reflect to you that it was a very healthy discussion within the meeting, there was a willingness to hear our concerns about transport matters. There are some substantial things coming out of it, and other things that are still to be further talked about. But what we have arising from the highways are the three items for local plan, in a way that I was just trying to reflect to you. And the three items for local plan are a reconsideration of traffic movements on the, effectively the A696, the, the north, sorry, West Road, West Road, Main Street, Bell Villas, down to the Badger, Chiview and so on. Looking at traffic movements, including Calhoun Lane, obviously, looking at the traffic light system, recognizing that it's very constrained in all of that area, but that's our number one LTP request. The second one is to look at the Jameson Fields request. We're all aware that Jameson Fields have put representations in to ask for a programme of work up there. In line with my remarks earlier on highways, it's unrealistic to think that all of that stuff could happen. But in that highways meeting, there was a willing, willingness to look at what Jameson Fields are asking for, and to try and see if that can be fitted in within the LTP programme. And the third item is the one that I mentioned a few moments ago, which is this junction of Thornhill Road and North Road, and see if we can get some easement of the traffic tightness in that, in that area. Those are the three LTP submissions, which are in the draft letter, which I think we should have in print of you, and that we're pulling forward from highways to go into NCC, in line with the new way that NCC are approaching it, of asking for a three-year request. I'll pause there.
The only, the only thing I would say, Alan, nothing against what you've put forward is, but your third item, I think about wiping the junction at the bottom of Thornhill Road for the way you have to come out to turn left. I would like to see that as your first priority, instead of your third. And that's just my opinion, I just think it's, it's a real bottleneck then.
Can I just say that Richard McKenzie did say at the meeting that a lot of priorities, one, two and three, that could be done in any order, anyway.
Right.
So, it, it.
He did say that.
He did say that, so, just because it's one, two and three, it's over a three-year period, they might give number two first, you know, might give number three first.
Yeah.
I, I think that's, yeah.
And can I just check, you know, obviously the, the, the things that we've requested per this latter are a study and two investigations. Is, is that just the correct wording to use to actually get an outcome? Because I don't, I don't want to, now that they're shifting particularly to a three-year model, I don't want them to say, well, we did a study and we did an investigation and we've decided not to, not to do that.
Well, well, they can, they can do that.
Well, of course they can, yeah.
You've got to ask for it, it, it's study first, so that was the suggestion we.
If, if, if that's what Richard said and that's what I was saying, then I'll, I'll trust you guys, yeah.
I, I think it's going to be tested as a feasibility, so they certainly can do things, and then, to then further develop it if they're able to do anything following the feasibility study. Okay, well, are people supportive of putting up LTP submission in then?
Yes.
Yes? Okay, thank you for that.
Think can I just ask on a, on a, on the highways matter about the speed indicator signs, the portable ones that were forward? I know you did send an email about it, forgive me, I've sort of forgotten and actually didn't quite understand some of the, the details. Where, where are we with it? Because I thought that what we'd agreed at the council meeting last month, or whenever it was, was that we would purchase two portable speed indicator signs to be mounted and on lampposts, and that could be moved about in response to resident demand. I know that there were some challenges with that initially, but are we now in a place where we will be able to do that?
Well, I, I think you already know that there is one, and if.
Yeah.
If, if there was approval from, was it the July meeting, I can't remember.
Whenever it was, yeah.
To purchase two. With the difficulties that we faced, you know, I, I talked to Alan about it and we decided not to. But if the, if the council's willing to pay for another one, that's, that's fine. But I think, when I had, I had a discussion with Richard McKenzie about it after the meeting, and he still maintains that the solar powered ones are the best ones to get, because you have to continuously charge the batteries. So I think we need a conversation around what is, what, what I'm purchasing.
Well, I, I, from, from my point of view, if Bligh Town Council have got this, and they've basically got the mission from NCC longstanding to shift it around, then I just think we should just do what they've done, rather than us trying to reinvent the wheel.
Yeah, we, we, we're very much on the same agenda as you've just said, Kevin. We, we purchased the Wilbar unit, they're trying to say that we can only have it on the one post, which is about to be installed on Calhoun Lane, but we will look to move it elsewhere.
Yeah, so is that, is that right, CAF?
No, not, not really, sorry, Alan.
I'm sorry.
So we've, we've bought that one, and I think we're committed to put that on Calhoun Lane.
Yeah, that, that's right.
And I think it's got to go there, and, you know, I don't, I, I don't want the fallout from not putting it there. I think if the, if the council are willing for us to purchase another one, it will cost another two and a half, two, maybe £3,000 to get the ones with the batteries. The batteries have to be recharged and changed every fortnight. I, I don't know whether we've got, you know, the time to do that, but I'll have to talk to Ian about that. So if the council are willing to look at buying another one to move elsewhere, which was the original idea, I'm, I'm happy to do that, but I just.
But, but ju, just, is, is the one that we're getting for Calhoun Lane going to be permanently fixed in Calhoun Lane?
No.
No, okay, fine.
It, it, it doesn't have to. It doesn't have to be, I have to be careful, I'm saying, it doesn't have to be, I think it needs to be there first. And I think we need to, Ian, we can download, download the data from an app, so we'll know what sort of speed, and speeds are being, being done, and then it could be moved, it could be moved elsewhere. But I just need to find a lamppost, if they, they'll, they'll agree for it to go on a lamppost, because we can't just have poles all over the place.
No, I, I agree.
So that's, that's the situation with that one, is that?
Yeah, yeah, that, that, that's.
Christine, you go first.
All I was gonna say is, when I first joined this council, we had every, they weren't called seats, they were called buses. Right, they were the same as the seat, except they only registered your speed. If you exceeded it, it didn't tell you, if you were travelling 27 mile an hour, it didn't tell you. They were moved every three months, it was a living hell.
I think that quite makes sense.
Because they kept breaking down and they kept getting, well, every time.
Just one bit, these, these are really different, they're very, they're very mobile, and they're just, you know, I'm, I'm not gonna be putting it up, but they, they just, you know, you, you connect them to a, a lamppost or a pole, they're not, I'm saying they're not difficult. I'm sure they're not difficult to move around, they're not like those fast things I've had, which were a nightmare.
That's why we moved to seats and they became permanent.
Well, good. Um, you're kind of answered my question, but not entirely.
Okay.
Is, is it possible to get one, or have we already got one, that actually tells you how many vehicles were speeding? Because that would deal with a regular complaint we get from Calhoun Lane. And if we are getting a second one, could we get one that does that and put that one in Calhoun Lane?
I, I think it's.
Because if, if we find out there's only 1% of, or 0.1% of vehicles speeding, well, I'd deal with that.
Do we need to know what, what this one will do that we've got, yeah?
Personally, I think it's possible, but I will need to double check, I think it is. But if we buy another one, it looks like the preference is to buy one with, with the battery.
Okay, so literally just whatever Bligh has got, right?
What I'm suggesting is that we give CAF the licence to look at buying one with batteries that could be moved around, and we'll make sure that it's something that will work sensibly before we actually go ahead and make the purchase, is that okay?
Yeah.
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 Right.
So I'll give the purchase, yeah, so I'll be to come back.
Uh, uh, you need to come back to us, we're giving you the licence to try and deal with it, yeah? So, if we're finished with highways, we're on to the Northern County Council report, so I think you two have this, okay?
I mean, there's nothing from our side, it was just mainly the highways thing, but then we spoke about that, haven't we?
Okay, fine.
I mean, I think Glenn, I think Glenn and Paul Jones were making it clearly obvious that there wasn't going to be a bypass. And I think they had, I think they were quite confident they didn't want that.
They were pretty clear, not least because of all the cost involved, but they didn't rule out the idea of this intermediate thing that I was describing. They didn't say yes, but they didn't say no.
I think one of their main reasons was because they, they'd done a study of cars coming into Ponte and and was that their destination, and it was. Rather than, it, it wasn't that many people passing through, they were coming to Ponte and to use Ponte and.
That's exactly right, but that was the situation in 2015, and we can't know what the situation is in 2025 unless we do a further study. I'm very conscious of time, I think we need to, to move on, ladies and gents. Anything, anything people want to ask, we care about, NCC?
Not really.
No, okay, the manager report, I, I didn't remember to put in there that I went to the annual flower show in the memorial hall as part of the, the manager report, so that's added on my copy here, if you, add it to yours if you're desperately keen to know what, what happened in my month's activities. We're now on to the vote by town council representatives, and it's the Lerton Ball AGM. No, do you want to come in on that?
No, it's NERMA, NERMA, I'm not the council's representative, I'm, no, it's NERMA.
I had the full report, I haven't got it, I mean, you know, we had a meeting, we had the, the.
No, all you've gotta ask is, is everybody happy with the minutes, this is what happened at the AGM.
Yes.
And you, you don't need to determine the minutes, we've got, it's all in there.
I don't know if anybody has got it.
We'll be, we'll talk to them.
It's just, she's, she's actually presented one before, that's all.
So that's what we're asking, is if we're okay with this draft report, is everyone okay with it?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thanks for that. And we've got the, we've got the accounts there in the papers, as usual, showing expenditure for the month, and giving us the background detail on that. If that is through on 1973, then I'm going to close this October meeting, and if you want, can we please?